Hi, Tim. Hi, Nancy. Tim and Nancy, can you both hear me?
I can't.
Okay, awesome.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm going to eat through this whole meeting, I think.
It's dinner time.
It's dinner time, and it's really hard. I don't know. I just walked in from the grocery store. Got my groceries put away, and I'm starving. So, anyway. I don't know, it's very rude, although it does seem to be happening. That's why I think everybody, that's why we leave it on no video, maybe, which I usually don't do, and I don't like to do.
No worries. Hi, David.
Hello, good evening.
Hey, David.
Hi, David, I haven't met you yet, but I'm Nancy Wilson.
We can't see.
Oh, the Zoom conferences. Gotta love them.
We do.
When was the last time you guys met in person?
Oh, we've never met in person.
Oh. I think it was our retreat, wasn't it?
Yeah, probably.
Yep, at our annual retreat.
Which amounts to going down to City Hall and meeting.
Or, I don't know why my video won't start. There we go. There we go. I'm on a tablet, which makes it seems a little bit, which is not as easy as my laptop. Is there anybody who's not gonna be here tonight, Tim?
Yes, Judith isn't gonna be here tonight because it's Passover. And I didn't try to reschedule everybody else so that we could get Judith here tonight on a separate night. And then Robin, who said that she's not gonna be here.
Robin?
Yeah, Robin COVID. She didn't give any reason.
Okay.
Said I'm not gonna be there. Okay.
Hope everybody else comes.
I hope so.
By the way. I see you have me down for 10 minutes for that goals section, which is fine. But I thought we agreed that it was gonna be 15 minutes in the future, no?
We did agree with that, and then it hasn't taken 15 minutes yet, so.
Okay.
If it takes 15 minutes, it'll take, yeah, we'll stretch it to 15 minutes. But it hasn't seemed to take that much time.
Gotcha.
Not that I'm trying to shortchange it. Well, we've got a few minutes to go. Hopefully, we'll we'll get at least two more.
So I know David was at the last meeting, did he give a little, did you give a little bio and talk about your interest in OSAC? Or are we waiting till tonight?
We're doing it kind of twice, which is okay. David came in, I think, two months ago and gave a little bio and talked with us a little bit and hung out in the meeting. Since then, he has put in his application and his letter of intent, which I hope we all read.
Great, okay, good. Sorry, I missed the last one. Maybe I didn't. It's just in the audience or something.
Wasn't the last meeting the one that had some Zoom issues?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, I could not log on to that one, so I missed it as well. I hear you got it fixed.
We did. Brad Barr or what's Brad?
He's our Parks manager, and that was my fault. I did not set Brad up for success by accident. So my link is the link that kind of lets everyone else in, and I didn't give that to Brad that night. He led the meeting, so definitely apologies for that.
Yeah, I was gonna say that Brad managed to figure out another way to get us all in on Microsoft meetings. So it worked out. Unfortunately, we didn't get to you in time, David. I suspect there will be a couple more people meeting tonight. It's very rare that we don't have enough people to. Let's see. Who should we be calling?
TJ.
Yeah, TJ is always a question mark. He's got such a strange schedule.
Actually, I'm gonna let TJ in now.
Oh, good. Yeah, that's great.
And there's Cheryl, good.
Good, okay. We've got a party. All right, let's give it a couple more minutes for those people that are a little bit late.
I think that's everybody, if Robin and and Judy, Judith, Julie aren't coming, right?
Let's see.
Is Judy gonna make it tonight?
Judy cannot make it, it's Passover, so that's a big day for her.
Oh, okay, I thought you said Judith earlier.
I.
Oh, Judith.
Chandler.
There's somebody who's not here, yeah. Chandler, okay, I think that's it. So why don't we get going here? If I'm squinting at the squinting here trying to read things, it's because my laptop screen is going out on me. Luckily, I'm in the process of switching things over to a new computer, which is a nightmare. But anyway, we will convene the April 22nd, 2024 meeting of OSAC. And currently in attendance is our myself, Tim Beeson, Nancy Wilson, Andrea Tuttela, Cheryl Klein, and TJ Maltese. And Steve Bremner has joined us as well, that's great. We also have guests, David Conley, who is an applicant to become a member of OSAC. And I believe Danu has just joined us, that's great, okay. So we've got a it's got a good set of people there. Okay, well, the first thing that we do is I get over and look at the agenda. Okay, first on the list is, of course, our order, which we just did. And then we have openings for two alternates. And one of the applicants, one applicant for an alternate slot is David Conley, who's joined us tonight, who also sent in his letter of intent, which I hope everybody had a chance to read. This is our official opportunity, after he's submitted his paperwork, to ask any questions that we have in an interview David. After that, we will dismiss David from the meeting so that we can then vote on his application. And I don't know, we can always invite David back in after that, I suppose. And probably would be a good idea. I'll shoot David an email after our vote, and if he wants to come back in as a guest at that point, that would be great. Okay, so anybody who has, hopefully had a chance to read his letter of intent, which I think summarizes his interests and abilities quite nicely. Anybody that has a question, please raise your hand. Nobody? That means you either did a terrible job or a great job of your letter of intent. I suspect it's a great job. David, could you leave the meeting for now, and we'll just go ahead and vote on this?
I will do that, thank you.
Okay, I will send you an email right after this to invite you back in, all right?
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, well, not much discussion. Anybody have any further discussion of David's application? Okay, then would everybody please vote? And like I said, I'm squinting at my screen right now, because I barely have a screen. So everybody, please raise your hand to vote for David for membership, alternative membership. And that will be, looks like everybody, so the vote is unanimous for David to become a alternate member of OSAC, which I think is great to pull him in on board. Hey, one thing I wanted to mention, while David's out of this, David, and I've mentioned this to David already, David's an attorney, of course, as you read. We are not allowed to get legal advice from him in the committee. Our legal advice has to come from Jeff Parker, our city attorney. Jeff, it's a line that Jeff will have to, Jeff, David will have to learn to walk. He can give us information, legal information, but he can't in any way act as our attorney. And, you know, I remember Mike Mayo walking that line somewhat, and seen that happen before. Okay, now.
Are you gonna invite him back?
That's what I'm doing. Okay, he has been invited. So we'll see if he joins. The next item is approval of the minutes. And we have no draft minutes available at this time. That seems to be, seems to be happening now, happening now, and then I'm not being critical. I'm just curious why that's a problem these days. Any idea, Jillian? That's probably out of your hands.
It is, but I can look into it and see if there's anything we can do to expedite the minutes for next time.
Yeah, it's probably a staff problem of some kind, you know, maybe somebody's coming in new or whatever. Okay, we will continue on there. Oh, I wanted to mention, I talked to Jillian about this, and we're gonna see if we can make this work. Jillian had started submitting a director's report, which is great, except it tended to be the same agenda as we have in OSAC. So we ended up dealing with a bunch of stuff out of order in the out of order from OSAC in the director's report, and then we go back over the same things in in OSAC as we went through the OSAC agenda. So we're gonna try to integrate Jillian's director's comments into OSAC's agenda and leave room for Jillian to make comments at the end. So just wanted to mention that we were doing that. Does anybody have any comments? Next is items reports. Does anybody have any comments on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board? Okay, then we'll move right along.
We want to see if anybody wanted to make public comment.
Thank you. Where were the public comments? How did I miss? Oh, okay, gender review and public comments, that's interesting. Okay, so yes, if anybody, if there's anybody that wants to make public comments, that is that are items that are not included in the agenda. Can we please see a hand if anybody is looking to do that?
Hello, can you hear me? Hello, hello?
Oh, okay, Corey from Medicine Wheel. Yeah, go ahead, Corey.
Yeah, sorry if it's a bit loud, I'm just out on a bike ride. I was out on the Inman Trail today and noticed there's some trees that are broken off. And I recall, as Medicine Wheel, we've had an agreement with OSAC in the past where we would do some minor maintenance on the trail. We called it our Trail Agent Program. And I just wanted to double check, it was okay with everyone. I was gonna take a folding saw and go do some repairs on some damaged trees that got put down recently.
Well, it's certainly okay, but with me, does anybody have any thoughts, further thoughts about that? One thing I'd say, Corey, is, sorry, go ahead, Nancy.
I was just wondering if Jillian had any thoughts, since we haven't, our wrist, we're not stepping on anyone's toes.
Good point.
I will tell you, Matthew can take all the help he can get right now, especially with trees along the trail system. Corey, did these trees just fall over from recent wind and snowstorms, or what was their origin of falling?
That's what a lot of them look like to me, although I wasn't there when they fell. And I'll be happy to document with some before and after photos, just to keep everyone on the same page.
Yeah, that'd be awesome, thank you.
Okay, great. One thing is that, and we'll talk about this in a little bit, we're gonna have Remfy doing some work, possibly doing some work. We've still got a lot of walls in the air as far as trail work goes, but and they're looking to take down a, I seriously doubt if you're gonna get to the top of Red Mountain to do this. They're looking to take one of our trees that has been topped, broken off at the top and using a pretty healthy, you know, maybe something six, eight inches or more in diameter to take that down and use that as part of the remediation on the top of the trail. There, we go around that cliff. And they're gonna use a long log like that to to push up against, set up against the trail to give it a little bit more width down there, so don't take everything.
Hey, got it, got it, thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any comments on that?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Corey.
Did anybody say?
Yeah, Cheryl.
Did anybody make notice that we're meet, or take note that we're meeting on Earth Day? I just thought that was fun.
Nobody has yet, but you did, and thank you.
Another thing I heard on NPR today is that if we turned off our photo, you know, the video on the Zoom meetings, it would save 96% of our carbon print of our meeting, but I don't think we want to do that.
I don't think we want to either.
But just so you know, for other meetings that you might have that you can get by without seeing each other.
I'm just guessing that driving down to join a meeting would probably burn up, at least.
Yeah.
Burning up now.
It was amazing, though, that they said that.
Okay, thanks, everyone. Moving on. And Andrea, thanks for noticing that. I'm gonna skip right over that. Okay, so we've got approval of minutes from Para. Moving on to old business, since we have no new business. And this is really kind of a interesting story, and I want to bring Danu into it a little bit. Like I said, Judy can't be here, but at our last meeting, Judy brought up the issue of what was going on over at Rainbow Falls. And we brought up the concept that Danu had been wanting to build a trail up there. We're not gonna deal with that, the trail building up there right now in detail, we just don't have enough information. I didn't have a chance to get all that together, but we're gonna pull Danu in, in a second anyway, on Fields Park. So Danu, are you there? Are you muted?
She's here.
Is she muted?
No. Danu, will you try to?
Okay, I'm here.
There you are.
Hey, Danu, how you doing?
I'm good, thank you.
Great, well, look. Like I was saying, Judy Karnak had brought up in our last meeting, she talked a lot about the Rainbow Falls issue and all that kind of stuff, and then you and I went for a great hike up there trying to figure out, or you were really pointing out to me how we might develop a trail up there. And I am not prepared to deal with that, talk about that tonight. I do want to see if we can get together with our planning director, our new planning director. What was his name again? Jillian?
So his name is Fred, and we actually had our new city engineer start today.
Oh, okay.
We have our planning director and our city engineer, they're both back in place, so we're pretty excited.
Drinking from the firehose right now, trying to come up with speed. But those are two people that we want to get together, and at some point, I would like to come in and talk about the trail that Danu has in mind. It looked doable, and as Nancy said, last time we were talking about this, a challenge, a technical challenge, but doable and something we probably want to get on the boards for, within the next couple of years, anyway. But Danu, I'm glad you're there, because next thing we're gonna talk about, we do want to pull you into, yeah, go ahead.
Could I just, could I just bring up also, we had talked about doing a low-rise pedestrian bridge across Fountain Creek from our property that would connect over to the Whale's Tail property? Because there's no real legal way to access the other side of that creek unless we trespass on the Manitou Bottling property. So that might be something that, well, that might be something that would be a lot more easier to do, which would be to start, you know, looking into getting some engineering done for a low-rise pedestrian bridge just to get us across the creek so we could access the other side, city property. So I think that would probably come a lot sooner than the trail, maybe if you.
I'm not, I'm not sure that's an OSAC project. In fact, I'm pretty sure it isn't.
Well, it would be, well, it would be part of the creek walk, you know, and if you needed some buy-in from Para, I'm sure there'd be people on Para would be interested to support that as well, as well as the community.
Okay.
Yeah, and Lusugi would have to support it. I have a question for Danu. Danu?
Yes.
Where are you at with the master plan for the Hickinbotham Flats area?
Well, Jillian and I are working on a draft for the master plan for an RFP. And so we're just, we're just trying to iron out details and stuff. We basically approved the basic outline of the components that we'd like to see up there. And that will, that will have to get refined as the overall proposal, and then we'll probably put it out for bid for a master plan drawing, design drawing.
Great, okay, thank you.
Now, but it will revolve around the seven stone caron that just received a grant from the Match Funds. The artist Manuel Pulito submitted us a photograph of what he wants to build out of some big seven stones, and it would represent all of the indigenous tribes that were here back in the day. And I think what we're envisioning is that the theme of this park would be dedicated to the indigenous tribes and to the indigenous people, which might hold with grants, grants, yeah.
Unless something changed radically since our last meeting, I serve on the Match Board, and I think we funded that contingent on the master plan being done.
That's correct, this month, I mean, this year, city council approval for 2024.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, Andrea.
There we go. Remind me, if anybody can, so it was my understanding that the master plan for that was sort of it was my understanding that the master plan for that was sort of taking place at the same same time as developing a master plan for this whole Serpentine area. Can anybody straighten me out on that, like, or where we're at with all that?
We've got a contract let to JR Engineering. Um, they submitted a proposal and that proposal was accepted, which is, uh, pretty complete.
For?
For the.
That's for the creek walk, two.
That's for the creek walk, phase six Serpentine.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Doesn't include Rainbow Falls.
Right, so I was, I'm I'm talking about like the whole, um, you know, Hickinbotham Flats, like connecting the trail down to Creek Walk.
There's not, there's none of that, yeah.
Uh, okay.
Yep.
I I think Andrea, you're referring to like when Skylar was on board, because that was the big master idea plan was was to be able to connect the trail from a SERP six. And it would connect up the the Whale's Tail up to the park. So that's maybe is is what you were talking about, because Skylar really thought that we could get a GOCO grant for that project. But, uh, because of the scope and the enormity of it, Parab is going ahead to just kinda do what we can do within our 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 scope of 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 work and getting a master plan for that area.
And so I I was just looking at some of my notes, I just have it set that there was some kind of Serpentine master plan happening. And I remember Dole talking about it.
That is, I think that is what, uh, JR Engineering is doing. Is that correct?
So the, so what I'm thinking of as a Serpentine thing is the Creek Walk master, Phase Six master plan. Okay.
Yeah, that is JR Engineering, I believe. That's, that's worth taking a look at, just to just to see how the big boys play when they're doing a trail. I mean, they managed to spend a hundred thousand dollars on the plan.
Well, and it's not just Creek Walk. It's, it's, you know, it's the whole, it's the road. It's, you know, the development of that, of Serpentine Drive. Um, it's not just Creek Walk.
That's where the mo- that's where the money is going.
Right.
There's a lot of the engineering on.
It's a highway department thing and all that stuff has to be involved.
Does it have a name, like, that project?
It does.
SERP six is what Danu's calling it.
Well, I I I got that from Dole.
We just call it Phase Six or Phase SERP. That's the, what we've been calling it. I don't think there's a formal name for it at this point.
It's a pretty impressive piece of engineering, though, if you read the JR Engineering proposal. Or at least it's com- complicated enough to make you think, okay, that's worth the money. Okay, let's.
Hey, Tim, could I just jump in real quick before, uh, while we're talking about about, uh, that whole Creek Walk area? You know, there's a natural trail that goes right along the, uh, the creek there. Right, right below the 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 formal Creek Walk that's being engineered or or surveyed or developed. And what I would really love to do is is to be able to talk to your guy from Rimfi to get his take on what it would take to just clean that up and make it a little more, uh, passable around some of the terrain obstacles, because that would be a really nice addition to the, to the, uh, the proper official Creek Walk sidewalk and 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 to just be able to develop the natural trail that goes along the creek. That's all. Just throwing out ideas.
We're, we may be talking about that idea on, uh, on the next, uh, uh, topic with, uh, no, I'm I'm sorry, a a little bit later on, we're gonna talk about that with another project. Um, let's go ahead and get on to, uh, okay, just say, just end that, we'll prepare something, um, at least a high level, uh, Daniel, you and me and whoever else we can drag in on that planning and whatever, just as at a high level of something that we might shoot at for the, uh, for the Hickinbotham to, uh, Serpentine Drive. Trail, Hickinbotham down to Serpentine Drive Trail. Okay, um, Fields Park, uh, Creek Walk, it's kind of a misleading name. It's Fields Park at the Creek. We know which, uh, property we're talking about, but probably most people, somebody can find a better name for that, that's fine. Come up with something. But, uh, first of all, I I took a look down there. Let me, uh, pull something up on the, on the, uh, packet. Flip down through here. And tell everybody what page it's on. First thing is the survey page, which we've seen before. And it's on page twelve of the packet. And we've got, uh, let's see, the the guy's name is John Day, and what's the company that he works for, um, the, our sur- surveyor? Do you remember?
Yeah, Drexel Barrel.
Drexel Barrel, yeah. So they've started down there, but I don't think they're done yet. They were supposed to be done a couple of weeks ago. But I went down there today and looked at that, and they've got the, uh, they've got the property line and corners marked on the, would be the north side of the property. But that just runs along the fence, so it's not not any big, uh, um, surprise. The interesting thing is where the property lines are on the other side, the south side, and whether we own the creek or the land, uh, on the creek. Um, so that we can do our, uh, uh, cleanup, so that Matthew can do his cleanup on that without worrying about trespassing on everybody's property. Hopefully that'll be done, um, I'll, I've gotta call into to John, so hopefully that'll be done and complete, um, by the time Matthew wants to get in there in May. The other thing I wanted to talk about, and on the next page is our, uh, the Fields Park Creek Walk tasks. And that's changed a little bit. Um, the survey was supposed to be done by now, so I've marked that as done. Does everybody see what I'm talking about? Just that, uh, little piece of, uh, little piece of spreadsheet. Okay, I'm assuming everybody does see it, since nobody's saying no. Um, so the survey is supposed to be done and it's in process. Uh, the CSU land inspection, uh, with Derek Lowstooter was done, and I'm gonna talk about that a little bit in a minute as well. And our arborist report, the next thing to be done is, uh, to clean up the property and remove the dead wood and stuff like that. Or remove the fence. What I would like to do is is change gears a little bit. We were talking about how going, uh, um, developing, developing that property for ADU, ADA accessibility. And when I started to think about that a lot more, it seemed like it was really outside of where we allow. Um, for one thing, as we learned with the, uh, with the CSU report, um, land report, it would take a heck of a lot of, uh, effort, um, and expertise to remediate the low-lying land in there that had been dug down and moved up. Um, that was gonna be quite, quite a process. And then we'd have to lay lay down a hard surface uh, for the accessibility capability, which basically means concrete. And the whole process would have pulled us off into a whole different direction than is reasonable, I think, for OSAC to be taking on. Danu, you still there?
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay, you walked, we walked down there together, uh, what were you, what were your thoughts on that?
Um, I think that would make a great pocket park, really, and, uh, I actually Parab has been talking about trying to do an, a senior, um, senior adult fitness station that would, that would be, you know, different kind of fitness, uh, equipment for seniors or for whomever. And that location would be a perfect place to have a a fitness seniors station set up there. But, um, also, I I think that the ADA piece of it, I don't think it would really be uh, necessary, only because the Creek Walk is right above, and that provides all the ADA access. I mean, we could put the the senior fitness station close enough to the Creek Walk trail so that people could access it. Uh, so that they, so they wouldn't have to.
Well, the the big point with, uh, Danu is that, uh, you had said that, um, uh, simply by doing the cleanup, not even worrying about cutting the weeds or anything like that, the Parab would be willing to accept that property. Is that correct?
I would have to take that back to Parab and ask them and then take a vote, form a vote on that. But I'm, I I don't think that they would be opposed.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, yeah, Nancy.
Oh, I was just gonna say, um, two things. Number one, Danu, we we heard a presentation from, um, I can't tell you who now, but but of the, from the, um, Disc Golf people who would like to put the holes they need to make a regular nine-hole, I guess, course. Um, they would like to put that in there. And the other thing is that I know you guys have a goal of making parks ADA accessible. Um, just like we have around some of these trails. And I think relative to that, this is one of the flattest places, you know, you can find any place in our area where and our idea was just to give people in wheelchairs and that kind of thing access to the water. Not just to see it, but actually safely get to it. So those are just a couple of considerations. I think, you know, if you guys accept the property, it's certainly for you to figure out. But that's, um, those are a couple of background pieces, um, that you should know.
Okay.
Um, one of the things, yeah, go ahead, Nick.
I, I actually, uh, connected up, uh, Matthew who approached us with the Disc Golf course idea for that property. And as you know, we already have a a pa- practice Disc Golf course, Disc, uh, Frisbee course at, uh, Fields. And we have quite a few baskets there, and that area is quite a bit larger than than the, uh, uh, the property that you folks just purchased. And then my other concern is it's so close to the creek, we'd have frisbees flying into the creek. At at least, at least where where it is in Fields, there's a buffer there. And the the concern of of frisbees going into the creek is still a a reality, but less lesser so. But I think there's already like maybe eight baskets existing at Fields Park.
And then really. I think the idea was to, I think there's nine there, and then nine more would make it a full eighteen hole, like most of the others are. But, yeah, all of your considerations are valid.
So what I did is I I got, I contacted the the original folks who belong to the league. They have a Frisbee Golf League. Uh, their locals here, Ben, um, Engelhardt and Steve Maul. And they're the ones who installed all those baskets free of charge, because they love doing it so much. And Parab just purchased all the baskets and and they did all the work to install all the baskets. So I I connected Matthew with, uh, Steve Maul to talk about that aspect.
Okay.
Because I've pretty much turned it all over to Steve, because I kinda see Disc Golf as his, his baby, his purview, his expertise.
Yeah, I, I think that's the appropriate place for it to be is in is Parab to make that decision after we turn the property over to you.
Do you, do you folks have any strong feelings about that?
Yeah, Andrea. I think you're muted, Andrea.
Um, yeah, so I am wondering, so we're talking about now changing the designation from open space to parks? Is that what you mean?
Yes.
And then, um, I was just gonna say that, you know, part of us, our consideration of purchasing that was just that that is open space, you know, and that it would, you know, maintain some kind of natural character, people's access to. That is also important, so. I mean, I think Parab values that also.
Yeah, I mean, uh, it, it, yeah. I guess, I mean, we could, we could take it out as a pocket park and just leave it natural. We don't have to do anything with that property, really.
Yeah, I think that would be best. Um, as far as the the Frisbee Golf thing, um, that's a small area. It's a small width. It's, uh, average a hundred feet across there. Um, you're gonna end up with, you're definitely gonna end up with frisbees in the, uh, in the creek. And then you're gonna end up with people going on to private property to retrieve their frisbees. And at that point, we have, we have, uh, a couple of neighbors anyway that aren't gonna be real happy with us if we do that. So that's a consideration. But, uh, the good thing is we can throw that over on Danu.
You, you know, some of the feedback that we we have had from our existing Frisbee Golf course is that uh, pedestrians walking by have to be really careful not to get hit.
Right.
By them frisbees. And then early on, when when we first started, there was a a couple residents who were really upset because they couldn't walk their dogs in the, in the grassy field area because of all the frisbees flying around. But, uh, I haven't heard much from them lately, so I I guess they've worked it out. Because as I, as I pointed out, our parks are for everybody to use, and that we have to share and give and take. And, and we can't just, you know, cater, it's just one, one, the loudest voice that.
I'm not a Frisbee guy, but I'm, I imagine that, uh, frisbees, that's a, that's a bicycle corridor ru- running right next to that. And I imagine that frisbee is coming out of your line of sight um, would be a little disturbing on a bicycle if you were going any speed at all. But I don't know, I'm not a Frisbee person, and and I'm certainly happy to leave that up to Parks and Rec. Um.
Well, and we are doing, so City of Colorado Springs, they have the Cottonwood Creek Disc Golf Course that is right on Cottonwood Creek Trail, which I would argue is one of the busiest urban trails in the region. They have minimal conflicts between the Disc Golfers and, um, bikers, pedestrians, dog walkers, et cetera. It might be the design of the course, but I wouldn't be too concerned about user conflicts. Um, the Frisbee Golf community, they're, they're pretty well behaved as far as user groups go, at least in my experience. Uh, but it's something that we're, we're in talks with Colorado Springs to learn more about how to manage that interface. But that's definitely a valid point.
Okay. Well, the question I think we have now is, uh, whether we're gonna turn this over to Parks and Rec, and Parks and Rec can then make that decision. Does anybody have any strong feelings against turning this over to Parks and Rec? It seems to be the right fit. So, yeah, Nancy.
Yeah, this is definitely not against it. I'm, I'm totally for it, but just by way of background, you know, uh, preserving in terms of acquisition, you know, why we bought it in the first place is, you know, preserving riparian areas is in, uh, part of our list of, um, acquisition cri- criteria from the post-plan. And so I think that was our thought in purchasing that property is the first thing was let's preserve this, you know, riparian area that's also on the Creek Walk Trail. Um, knowing full well that it's very small under our, our open space standards, um, that kind of thing. And and knowing that, you know, it probably is, you know, you know, thinking about the maintenance of it. So we've bought it now, but, um, the type of maintenance, all those kinds of things are are kind of better handled by parks. Because it's, we're used to dealing with much larger pieces of property. So, um, yeah, that was just the. So um, yeah, that was just the thought is that it's, you know, better suited to a to a park type of space, whether it be really natural or whether it be more developed. I think we were, like you said, Tim, maybe hoping that it would be more natural, but we also had a lot of discussion about wanting to make to make it ADA accessible too, or an opportunity to make things ADA accessible. But otherwise, yeah, and it by by it not being our space, it really enrolls a lot of other resources, I think. Um that are part of parks and park maintenance and all that kind of thing. So if Parab will accept it, I'd be totally good with that.
Okay, um, do you think we should uh take a vote on this? Do we need to take a vote on it? Okay, um so can I hear um uh proposal for that vote?
Sure, I would move that we donate the property at um Fields Park Creek Walk area. What's the acreage, Tim?
It's one acre.
Uh one acre.
One point five, one point zero five acres.
One pay point zero five acres to Manitou Springs Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Should they accept it?
Should we say that we want to rezone it? Not just, it's like, I mean, isn't that what we technically would be doing?
Who was that?
Didn't we say that we want to rezone it or just like approve?
Actually, I don't think we have have it zoned uh open space at this point, so whatever we're zoning it to, we can skip the open space part and just rezone it to Parks and Rec.
Well, this is really good timing because it's on the city council agenda for May seventh, the next council meeting. It is slated to be zoned as open space, so now would be the time to let council know that we're aiming to zone it as a park instead.
Good, good. Okay, do we see here a second on the motion?
I second it.
Thank you. Um is there any more uh discussion? Then why don't we take a vote on passing the motion? All in favor, raise your hand. That's one, two, three, four, five. It looks like that's unanimous. Motion passes unanimously. That's great. Thank you, Danu, and and yeah, if we, we need to get together and talk about your uh your grand plan out there on the motor thoughts and the trail.
Plenty of time, Tim.
Yeah, they're believing, there is plenty of time on that one. Um, the next thing coming up, let me just make sure I'm hitting everything here. Yeah. Okay, um is the Bill Bauer Trail. And um, let's see, we met uh last week, was it, with uh Matthew and and uh uh Woody, Carl Woody. Yeah, last week, um to have Matthew and Carl Woody get together and talk about how much cleanup was necessary in order for Carl Woody to get down in there and uh and uh do the alignment for the uh for the multi-use trail. And during that meeting, um Carl and Nancy and the rest of us had a bit of a conversation about some other possibilities. And Nancy, why don't you go ahead and discuss that?
Well, I think about including Jillian and Brad and there were six or seven or eight of us who whacked their way down from the top and it really was bushwhacking. And it really um you know, it's a, it's such an interesting piece of property, but it was really interesting to watch, walk it with Carl from Rimfi. Because right away as we were starting, he was starting to look at seriously a trail alignment and that kind of thing. A sustainable trail there would involve, you know, getting well up away from the creek um along, you know, a couple of the steeper banks on on either side of the creek. It would actually kind of start on on the um east side and at some point traverse the creek and be on the west side and, you know, there's some, there's some really cool things, you know, everything from um red rock, you know, boulder configurations kind of thing to um you know, dense forest. But it is very, very dense. And there wasn't much evidence. There was evidence of a couple of social trails coming down, straight down to the creek from the park, but there wasn't evidence, strong evidence of people using that as a trail, as a social trail to get down to um Crystal Park Road yet. So um the thought that I threw out there is uh um I've always been interested in that property in terms of a safe routes to school grant. Because there, I've I've heard several times from people up in that neighborhood that that, you know, having their kids go down to Crystal Park Road and along Crystal Park Road um from Sutherland or from any of those roads there to get to school. It it's the Crystal Park Road part that is so dangerous and doesn't have sidewalks. It has that um blind curve and everything else. And that, you know, people would be really uh excited to have their kids walk or ride their bikes another way that would put them out on the sidewalk and then there'd be a traffic light and all that kind of stuff. But there was no evidence of of anybody doing that. And it's after walking it, I can see why, because like I say, we were bushwhacking through. So the thought was, maybe we don't talk about putting in a permanent trail. Um Carl agreed it would be expensive. It wouldn't be just a, you know, improving a social trail or something like that. It would be a fairly expensive trail for us to build right now. And maybe a better approach would be um what Jillian named a phase, a phased approach, which I thought was a good idea. And that is, we start just by doing some simple corridor clearing um kind of along the creek um in an area that as if as you walk it, you can kind of see, well, these are some natural social trail kind of routes. They wouldn't be sustainable necessarily because probably most of it would be relatively close to the creek. Um but nevertheless, it could be a nice footpath kind of thing. And do that first and just kind of see what kind of um use we get. And the other thing is, in order to be, to build the kind of trail we're really talking about, we probably have to have a couple of community meetings about this because this does traverse a section where there are homes on either side up on the edge of the little, whatever you want to call it, a royal or valley or whatever through there. So it would be a fairly intense uh project to go in there and build a big, you know, sustainable trail at this point. Why not uh build a navigable footpath and just see if the early, you know, area people start using it um as an access. We need some of that data if we were to write a safe routes to school grant anyway. So that was the thought. And I guess the other thing, it just from a big picture point of view, and that's gonna be um also on our agenda is, we've got a lot of big fish to fry in terms of Black Canyon and some of those other things. So um, I mean, I guess it's and 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 including uh, you know, trail maintenance on Iron Mountain and Red Mountain. So anyway, that was the thought is kind of um get in there, do some cleaning, make it possible for somebody to to um walk through there without poking their eye out for the most part and then um let it ride for a while and see what happens.
Yeah, and this wouldn't necessarily be the final trail alignment at all. We'll see. Um, one of the things that I believe you guys were talking about is the possibility of getting a a GOCO grant or or a safe access to schools grant. And in order to do that, we'd need some metrics about how that trail was being used uh currently. And that would give us the opportunity to get those metrics and uh uh if we decided that the multi-use trail was the way that we needed to go, then that would give us a little bit of help with uh with um financing that. Um, anybody else have?
Well, the only other thing I'd add is, and I'm, is that our arborist said, there is not, there's not a huge, there's not a big number of dangerous trees in that area, that he didn't think it would be too hard for them to clean it up. So, and I think the the other corridor clearing could actually be done, um you know, with OSAC and volunteers on a workday kind of thing.
TJ, what do you think?
There we go. I'm trying to find a way to unmute myself. Um, well, I was a big proponent of of using this um this purchase for connectivity down from from the top of this Crystal Hills area. Um because yeah, on Crystal, was that Crystal Hills Boulevard down there? There are no sidewalks whatsoever coming down next to the um the highway or anything, so it'd be a great thing to do. But these are all very good points about getting some metrics in there, starting off a little easy. The only thing that I'm a little concerned about is when we um, when we do this work to put in a trail, um here in the West, these trails, if we decide to do a new realignment, they don't heal very quickly. And so the temporary alignment might not be so temporary, so we just if we go ahead with that, we might want to keep that in mind a little bit.
Okay. Um, one, one thing I'd like to say about the uh the safety of coming down Crystal Hills Boulevard, I've I've walked that, I've pedaled it and everything else. Um, I agree that it's not very safe right now. I had had a talk with um and and Dole, it set me up with a uh really nice guy, um I think our, our mobility director, Juan Alvarez. And I met him and uh two of the his other coworkers uh down at the bottom of that hill and suggested that we put a uh uh slow lane trail up on the, what would be the west side of the uh of Crystal Hills Boulevard. And that could be used either for pedestrians or for bicycles going up the hill. And bicycles going down the hill are already, it already says that it's a uh mixed use um road up there. There's a sign up there saying exactly that. And bicycles going down that hill can just pull out in traffic like you're supposed to do in a situation like that. And they're gonna be going the twenty miles an hour anyway, down that hill on a bicycle. So it's, it's perfectly safe in on the downhill lane. Um, and then we'd have an uphill lane for pedestrians and uphill bicyclists. Seemed like a reasonable solution. I was thinking actually of that for the road bikes. Now being able to come up that safely with a road bike and for pedestrians to kind of there safely. So it is a day, a uh replacement of the potential mountain bike trail down through uh uh down through the canyon there, but it is a uh it is a way of of conveying on bicycles safely. And hopefully, they're gonna do that this summer.
But what if people want to ride their bicycles on a natural trail like that? I mean,
Right, right.
That is a thing.
That is the thing. And um yeah. Say a little bit more about that. Well, uh David.
Nancy, what was the discussion at the pinch point?
Uh, there wasn't much of a discussion at the pinch point, other than um trying to know exactly where it was. Um and everybody agreed it was, you know, a pinch point, but but that you could make it navigable, navigable, if that's a word. I don't know. Tim, do you recall?
Yeah, um, we talked about that a little bit. Um, when I was, when we were down there and the pinch point happens to be right where that rock is, right where that big, beautiful, interesting um sandstone rock is. Uh, hopefully, um uh Mr. Rose is going to give us a any, an easement on the other side of the creek. So that we'll have another uh twenty, thirty feet um to work with on the other side of the creek. Otherwise, what you have to do is you have to go above that rock. And that's going that's gonna be difficult. Well, that you can't do that because you've only got twenty feet, twenty-five feet at that point. So we really need to get that um easement on the other side. That that's not true. For a walkway, a pathway, walking, you can certainly make do with that. But for a uh five-foot wide uh multi-use trail, um it'd be a tough squeeze to get through there. I don't, we don't have a solution, is what I'm telling you, except that we're we're dependent upon the kindness of others.
As you really hit TJ's concerns, if you're above that sandstone rock, you're on a steep slope and anything you do is permanent there. I mean, I I sure hear that comment. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I'm coming in uh from, Tim and I walked this uh several months ago. Uh, I think it was like late last year. And uh, yeah, I mean, you're not gonna win any, any uh fans in the neighborhood if you decide to try to blast through any of that fountain sandstone that's uh down there to make a, make a trail. But with uh a lot of our trail systems now, especially in order to make them multi-use, sometimes we might not have them specifically five feet wide in all respects. You know, we have to deal with what nature gives us in that and on that property. And so we I'm sure that we'll find a way to work together with our user groups in order to make it worthwhile.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of, one of the things that I had mentioned to uh Carl in an email was that we had a a lot of the point in having a bicycle route down through there was uh for kids um on their way to school. And we would, we would really, we would really need to look out for safety down there. The uh, the slope down through there, just on a straight line basis, is eight point seven percent. But that eight point seven percent isn't consistent. There are going to be areas through there where it's probably closer to the ten or twelve percent. And at that point, you need places where people can pull over um and get out of the way. Now where you can come to a stop if you're going downhill. And that's a, that's the kind of challenge I imagine Remfy faces all the time. It's a matter of course. But I just wanted to make sure that they were very aware of that with the uh, with the alignment. Um, so these are things that we're just talking about right now. Um, uh, Remfy isn't uh on the hook to get down there at any particular time. Um, just whenever we turn him loose. So uh Cory, I imagine you have some comments on this?
Um, th- thanks. I'm listening with interest. Um I, or anything that contradicts what w- what we saw when we went out there and looked at it.
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't think we need to vote on any, well, maybe we do. I mean, we're getting to the point where we want to turn uh Remfy loose on that. Yeah, Nancy.
Yeah, I think from one thing, I do really appreciate what what um TJ's saying. And I I thought the same thing. I mean, I asked myself the same thing. But it's so kind of dense through there. Um I think if if we put in the kind of trail that that Rimfi's talking about right now, up up well on the ledge, which would have to be a fairly um, it might even have to be reinforced in some places. Um, you would still inevitably find people wanting to find their way down to the creek. It's just the nature, the nature of water. So I think, you know, rather than than fight that urge in something like that, we we acknowledge that there will be places where people want to get down to the creek, especially when it's running. Um, I don't know, I see two, two, maybe three air things right now to be done. One is nothing and urge um OSAC members and other people in the neighborhood and others to get out there and walk walk that, uh, you know, creek, walk that piece of property and see what you think in terms of doing something. The other thing is, clearly, we can look, you know, we can ask Rimfi what they would charge us to do a complete alignment, a sustainable trio. What they would charge us to do a complete alignment, a sustainable trio, trail alignment through there. Um. Or three, we could do uh, what I talked about in terms of doing a little corridor clearing. Um. And kind of seeing for ourselves what what that would. And I don't think we need to vote on any of those right now, but I would like some more feedback from everybody about it. Um, and and you know, talk to your neighbors. I mean, especially people who love, lo- live up there at the top, you know, is it something that they. They foresee using and and uh, allowing their kids to use and some of those kinds of things.
Yeah, I would, uh, I wish uh, um, Robin was here. We could talk a little bit more about what she's.
Yeah, about community meetings would be great.
Community outreach, yeah. Um.
One, one thing that I would like to note though, is that uh, of all your uh. Your proposals, Nancy, I see a lot of danger in just inviting the, without any um, guardrails out there, inviting the general public into there. It may uh. We may have conflict between those people and the landowners around them right now, and that may not work in our favor for garnering support. Um. Of all the things that you suggested, I think that, you know, at least taking a nibble out of it and doing some corridor clearing and opening it up and making it a little more accessible. Might whet some people's appetites to continue the project a little bit more too. And so I'm mostly in favor of that method.
I think that makes a lot of sense. Yeah, Andrea.
Um, yeah, I I also like what Nancy's saying too, but um, I think we need a structured way to do that somehow, like just, we need like feedback, like. How are we gonna do that? You know, like, how are we gonna collect that information? Like, what specifically is helpful? Cause I feel, I I've been through, down through there just once and I'm like. I I mean, what, I'm not even sure what I would say, you know? It's like, yeah, I think you could probably put a trail here or there, but it's like without. Without like a plan, which I think we decided we're paying Rimfi to do a a trail layout plan, right? Or they they have agreed to do that. Um. Yeah, like I I would like to see what they come up with for that versus just. Yeah, I'm I'm a little, I I I'm looking for some structure, like for how to. Collect feedback, I guess.
Okay, um, yeah, I hear what you're saying. If we just put a uh. If we just put a path down through there, which is what Nancy's talking about. Um, a structured path of something kind, which I think we do need. I agree with TJ. We at least need that. We, we don't want to just throw people down in there right now. It's a bit of a uh, bushwhack. It's not a bit of a bushwhack. It is a bushwhack. Um, but uh, I can see doing the path and doing um. Having Remfy doing alignment down there. And marking it. To the degree that people can see. What the other trail would look like. I think that makes a lot of sense. Um. And Rem- Remfy says, says they're gonna do it for free. Yes, Steve.
Yeah, but.
Well, you just.
Steve, Steve, sorry. Go ahead, Steve.
I'm hearing two things. I'm hearing one. Rimfi's path, which would be not necessarily by the creek. And I'm hearing. Clear a corridor so people can hike down by the creek. I think we should. Center on one thing. We should say, okay, Rimfi's gonna. Propose the path. And I think we should just go with that. Rather than, you know, have some vague. Concept of, oh, well, we'll clear a corridor and see where people go down by the creek or whatever, see how people visit.
I think we're saying the same thing, Steve, is that the. The path down by the creek. Could be done by uh, Remfy, could be lined out by Remfy. And then uh, OSAC and volunteers.
Is that what they're proposing? Is that what they're proposing? I didn't hear that they're proposing that.
Um.
I, I don't think they know what they.
Right now, they've. We've asked them to do an alignment. For a multi-use trail down there, okay? But they are, have said that they're willing to. Um, do an alignment just for a uh, just for a path down there as well. So. That might be what we do, go ahead and do. Nancy, I'm sorry.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear that from Rimfi. At all.
You didn't hear what?
That they were, they were willing to do a path alignment. Um. I think at the point we started talking about. Um, not doing a sustainable trail alignment. That was the end of their part of the conversation. I don't think that they. I think they would only want to put their reputation on a sustainable trail alignment.
Yeah, I think, I think I would go with that.
Yeah, yeah. So we either do that. I mean, that could. Got to Andrea's point in terms of planning, that could be our next step, you know? We have Rimby, Rimfi under contract. Um, I don't know if it could be done this year. But um, in in terms of how much, you know, we have contract with them for three weeks a year. And they're already, they already have a good chunk of that time that will be taken up with the. With the stair. The new stairs going up Iron Mountain. So anyway. Um, but we could, we could hold off. There's no rush and wait for Rimfi to do a regular sustainable trail alignment. Whether they start this year or do it next year.
Um.
And that way the neighborhood will have something to react to. You know.
But I think we, I think we ought to also do. The path down by the water. So that people can get down in there. And see what we're talking about. And hopefully we can. By having the trail marked. They can see where a multi-use trail would be as well. I don't see.
Well, and I think the the multi, the trail that, the alignment, at least as um. Carl and I were walking it, you know, there are definitely. There will be places where. The trail comes down. One place especially where it's got to cross the river. Or the creek. Um. So. I I really hear what TJ is saying about creating something down there that we're not. Gonna use and isn't part of a sustainable trail alignment. Um. I think we should, now I've kind of changed my mind. I think we should wait. And get a sustainable trail along that and see how much of it is by the river, you know?
Well, ideally, like if we start like the corridor clearing, that should at least help some with. Visualizing it and. Yeah, some.
But are you saying we should only do corridor clearing along the alignment?
Yeah, that's tough one. Yeah, I don't know. I mean.
TJ, is that what you were saying that we should only?
Um, yeah, what I was saying is, you know, we want to try to keep uh, the impact to the, to the terrain and the environment there. Minimal, um. Until we know exactly where where that trail is. And so I'm not saying like bring it down to the creek um, right away. Um, the creek actually for me is. Not of any sort of consideration right now, or at least not a major one. But uh, you know, having that connectivity is really where I was coming from. So. You know, if we can, i- if you're gonna do some corridor clearing, have it at least in the likely areas, and that might actually help. Guide Rimfi and get them, you know, a little better look at what they're gonna be dealing with as a, as a final alignment too, and help refine the process.
Okay, but you're not in favor of putting a path. A footpath in down there closer to the creek, is that correct?
It doesn't necessarily have to be close to the creek. It may be close, it might not be close, but it's where it would make more. You know, the most sense for uh, for connectivity to get down to. Um, you know, towards the overpass down there. So. I don't know. It's a, it's, it's not an easy call. Um, and yeah, with corridor clearing. If if we're not, if we're not putting in tread, um, the tread is gonna be a lot more destructive, or at least a lot more permanent to the uh, environment than. Just some corridor clearing, because looking down there, it's mostly mountain mahogany, a lot of, a lot of scrub oak in those areas around those rocks and stuff. And that stuff tends to bounce back pretty. Quickly within. Five or so years uh, of that. We just want to make sure that we're not causing another problem like we have in Red Rock Canyon, which. You have renegade trails that go off in all sorts of different directions, and then people just. Keep using them forever. Um, when, when the alignments are being uh. Redone. And so I know that Red Rock Canyon has spent, um, there's been a lot of money put in there on closing those renegade trails. Um, all over the place. So I mean, if we can avoid. Laying them out in the first place, that would be better.
Hmm. Okay, well, you've got a solid decision on that. Um. We're gonna be in a position where we need to either. Um, turn Remfy loose on uh, doing an alignment, to multi-use alignment. Or uh. We're losing them for the year.
What do you think? Well, this, we're just gonna throw this out there. What about a, a, an OSAC workday where we all. Walk that trail again with our loppers and clippers. And just sort of agree on what might be a. You know, what might be some corridor clearing? Cause it's all. It's, you know. The most you'd use at this point probably is a bow saw, you know, it's not a big. Deal, but you, but to get a lot of branches out of your way so you can just walk through there without.
Yeah, that's, that would make a difference. It'd make it easy, but uh, we're gonna have the same problem that TJ is saying is that. We're gonna, we're going, we're probably going to succeed in getting people down there. But if we don't have an identified trail. Then. They're gonna make up their own trail.
Yeah. Maybe they'll identify it for us.
Possibly, but you know, I like the idea with that Nancy has as well with the bowsaws and the loppers and stuff like that. Like I said, corridor clearing is a lot different than doing tread work. We're not bringing. You know, dirt moving equipment in there or anything like that. So. It's much more temporary um, to do what she um, is proposing there.
Okay, David, what do you think?
Yeah, I'll, I'll bring a saw.
Okay.
But I guess I, I had Andrea's question, which I thought, Tim, you answered, and that is. I thought we had an agreement with Rimfi. They were gonna do an alignment, at least make a proposal. I didn't think that was tentative at all. I thought that was agreed upon in January.
That was agreed upon and we're uh, kind of stepping back from that. But you know, uh, to, to that point, David, I think we could go ahead and. Ask Remfy. I don't, I don't know if they'd find this offensive or not, to put an alignment down in there. Well, they shouldn't. We, they're putting in an alignment. And we're making a decision on whether or not we accept that alignment. That. That's not. Out of the re- realm of uh, reason. It's not.
But they should be clear on our expectations.
Yeah, right, right.
The other big unknown is until we know if that landowner is gonna give us that space. We really have to fi- figure out what we're doing through the pitch point. Right now, all you could do is.
That's a good point, um.
Tight rope around the.
I haven't contacted Larry Rose recently, but every time I do. He says absolutely, they're gonna. Give us that uh, give us that space. And when I ask uh, Winnie plans on doing is uh. Development of those, those properties, which is Winnie will give us that uh, that land. He's. His answer is whenever I get around to it. So we've got that solidly nailed down. Um. Okay, I like the idea of the workday down there. Should we uh, propose something?
Well, because it'll have to be um, put out as a public meeting.
Yeah, right.
That means other people could show up, but that's. That's okay.
Yeah, that's okay. Um. Should we select a day? If we don't do this now, it's another month out.
Yeah.
So.
I would just put out there too. I bet Medicine Wheel would be happy to host a workday like that.
Okay. Thank you. Um. Let's see.
Well, Nancy's our, our bush saw leader. When uh. What, what date, Nancy?
Um, well, let's see. And Corey had his hand up. Corey, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, Corey.
Yeah, just on that point, if it would be helpful for you guys, you know, we could, we could set up a um. You know, registration and and publicize a trail of workday. To do corridor clearing on that if uh. If you guys wanted that to happen.
Okay, let us think about that, Corey. I'm not sure how many people we want to get down in there right now.
Yeah, I'm just. Nervous about too many people.
Yeah, I, I, I think right now we're, we don't. It's uh, it's so overgrown and everything like that. I think we want to go down there with pretty limited.
If we want to know, yeah. Um, I could do it. Just about anytime starting um. The first of May.
Okay, how about? Um. Saturday, May eighteenth.
Works for me right now.
At um.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock. Danu, can you make that?
Oh, she does. That, that's not Parks.
No, I know, I know.
I, 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 I don't know. I, I have to check my calendar.
Okay.
I, I could bring donuts or something for you if I.
I'm, I'm just kidding. I know how much you like getting up early.
Right, right.
Okay, so uh, nine o'clock.
Saturday, May eighteenth at nine.
And.
Meet at Bill Bauer Park and it's a OSAC. Workday and you know, we'll post it and any public that wants to come. Can come, but.
Right.
Since it's kind of our first walkthrough, you know. Walk through with clippers, we'll see.
And uh, call it uh, nine or twelve.
Need like waivers and all that, like it's, I mean.
If it's just us, we don't. If it's a.
Oh, you, but you want, you're saying not the public or with the public?
Yeah, no, I'm saying. We won't formally invite the public, but because we have to post it. As a meeting. The public can show up. If they want. You know what I mean? And and usually what happens is nobody shows.
Wouldn't they still need waivers and everything?
I don't think so if it's us.
We need to sign waivers for that, I think.
I don't, we, I don't know. Julie, I have a question for you.
Yes, we would want waivers, uh, and that's something we can print out and have available. And I'd also like Brad or Josh, our Parks Maintenance Team to, to be there. Um, so I'll make sure to get them the date, May eighteenth. So I'll.
It's a Saturday.
And yeah, we'd be happy to have Medicine Wheel people down, down there.
But no picks, no McLeod's, no, only corridor clearing equipment.
So are you inviting Med Wheel to do that or not?
Um, maybe I shouldn't have said that. Do we not uh?
Well, just saying, you should be clear, because you know, they have tools and all the things. They will bring them and like organize a workday. For us.
I don't think we're ready yet.
I don't think we're ready for that, yeah.
Yeah. There's, you know, you and Corey are certainly welcome to come along.
Hold on.
Just Steve, Steve, maybe you know, like Friends of the Peak could, we could maybe use their tools if that.
Okay. Again, I, we're, we're just, we're just doing um. Um. Advanced pruning.
Yeah, everybody's. Gotta have lap, loppers or hand loppers or a little bow saw or a.
Yeah, a little, a little hands on, that kind of stuff. Um. And we'll see how far we get with that. It'll give us a chance to make up our mind about the next step. Okay, we got that. And uh, Julie, Julian, you're, you're providing the waivers and stuff, right?
Yes, and unfortunately I can't be there that day, but I'll make sure that either Brad or Josh is there.
Great. Well, and this, yeah, they probably have loppers and some of those things too. Tell them to load up the truck.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah. And we should be, and and we'll be done by noon. Tell them, I know it's Saturday, so. We won't take the whole day.
Yeah, three hours down there. It's quite a bit of time.
Yeah.
You know, it's only point. Point four miles, the way, the way the crow flies, but uh. That's great. All right. Let's move on. Good meeting, folks. All right, uh. Black Canyon, if we go over to. The. Well, we did, we did look at the Bill Bauer Park drawing, but everybody's looked at that anyway, I think. Uh, if you skip down to that, to the West Side LLC property. On page sixteen. Um, the only reason I put that in there is that uh. Just to make sure. Just to make sure everybody's familiar with it and also to point out, and this isn't a big deal, but it's kind of a curiosity. That the Westside LLC property includes these little striped, little pieces of property on the other side of the road. And I remember looking at the, um. The survey for Black Canyon. And they showed that the Black Canyon Road. Where it goes by the Westside LLC property is actually not on Colorado Springs right away. It's a little bit off of the right of way. I don't know what that means, if anything, or if that has anything to do with those little pieces of property out there, but it's a curiosity. Anyway, you can see from the, that drawing from the plat, um, and where, uh. The Boulevard is down here, that it's really making the accessibility of this property. Um, enhanced and especially the, the, the very, very steep access of Black Canyon. This is a great thing. Uh, Julian, do you know when we're closing on that?
I, I don't know an exact date, but I know that's one of Denise's top priorities right now, and she's actively working with the, the seller.
Right, right. I'm, I'm not sure actually now that I talk about it, that we should actually be throwing that out, that this property is being purchased. But, uh, don't, don't spread it around outside of, um, OSAC for now.
Well, the city council approved it.
They approved it in an executive session.
Oh. They didn't come out and vote on it?
They did vote on it, but they voted on it as doing an executive session. They voted.
You can't vote on anything in executive session. They had to have come out.
Came out of the executive session and voted to accept the, uh, the, the deal that they had, they had lined out. During the executive session. That's how that's done. So they did not name the property. Actually, they ended up naming the property too when they came out of executive session.
Yeah, so it could be in the, it could be in the paper.
We think it could be in the paper. If it's in the paper, then don't worry about it. But anyway, um, it's great that we're getting that and, and as Nancy said. Uh, that's gonna create a big bucket of work for us, uh, into the summer and next year. Uh, along with everything else we've got going. Okay, uh, anybody else have any comments on that?
I think it's fantastic. Just fantastic. It's. Our dreams come true as far as having a, a trailhead and, and enough space for potentially some parking and maybe even bathrooms someday. It's pretty cool.
Yeah. Yeah, that's another conversation, but yeah, it's great. Um, okay, so the Canyon purchase. And then Nancy, you were gonna review section six of the, uh, our goals.
Right, and maybe even section seven. So it's in your packet. And, um, focus on land conservation efforts, on value areas, including, so anyway. Just kind of an update. So I thought first to talk about really quickly, you know, some of our current acquisitions. Over the last two or three years and, you know, we've bought a significant. Or some significant pieces of property, um, starting with the thirty-one acres off Yute Pass Trail across from the water treatment plant. Um, and the proposed fire, whatever that thing is, fire building, practice building, whatever it is. Um, and we haven't, we've never really discussed what to do with it, but we know we preserve that hillside there pretty well. And it is adjacent to the trail, to the Yute Pass Trail there. So we bought that and then we bought, um, what we discussed tonight. The Creek Walk adjacent to Becker's Lane and, um, and the river there. That parcel, we bought the Whale's Tail on Serpentine, which was a real partnership with the city. Um, we bought the, well, we didn't buy it, but we got it through land dedication. The property at Cheyenne Village, uh, by the creek, and that's really something that, that Parib has taken over. Um, and really. Uh, shepherded that property, but the long story short is there that we, we threw our land dedication in with Parib. And the school district's land dedication in order to people, give people access to the creek there. By Shan, by Cheyenne Village as that is developed. There'll be another pocket park there. Um, and then this four point six acres, uh, Black Canyon property that we also purchased for ninety-three thousand plus. So we've been purchasing property, um, and we have looked at, you know, the visual character and biological and ecological work.
Hey Nancy?
Yeah.
Include the thirty. Five acres that we bought up above, uh, Yute Trail?
That's what I'm talking about.
The Isil property?
Thirty-one acres, yeah.
Thirty-one acres, okay, okay.
Yeah, that was the first one I mentioned. So anyway, um. So then when you go down to the, the action planned under goals, it's interesting. Concentrate future acquisitions in four larger land acquisition areas in general. Now, this is from the post-plan and, you know, this will be revisable. Um, this is suggestions at those times. And I don't know really all the thoughts that went into this. So the general area north of Highway twenty-four. So that I think people did have in mind, the Black Canyon property. Also in mind, this idea that appears elsewhere in the plan, which is about, um, someday having a ring. The Springs Trail, a, a ring of trails that goes all the way around Colorado Springs. So in that case, it's necessary to look at land north of twenty-four also. And then, um, northwest of Iron Springs and, and, um, property, so northwest of Iron Springs. I guess we're talking about, I don't know what we're talking about there. When I think northwest of Iron Springs, I think of the property. Uh, the trailhead for West Intiman, that kind of thing. Maybe some of you.
Well, that, that might include the Jenkins property if that.
Oh, yeah, it might, it might include the Jenkins property.
A possibility.
Right, and then south of Ruxton and south of the Cemetery High School. So that's what was suggested at that time. And then, uh, that's it. So six point two, identify and engage funding and implementation partners to improve the financial feasibility of large conservation projects. Well, none of those, these have been really large. The thirty acres, um, or thirty-one acres off Yute Pass. Was such a bargain at like a thousand dollars an acre that we didn't need any partnerships. Um, but we have been partnering on Creek Walk and the Whale's Tail and Cheyenne. Um. And even this most recent partnership with Black Canyon, not so much in terms of money, but in terms of in-kind services. Um, you know, everything from Denise, uh, negotiating the terms, the terms of the purchase and the city doing. Uh, you know, various projects, looking at our trees and that kind of thing. So I think we, we always are open to improving our financial, you know, feasibility, especially if we came across a large project. Um, six point three, evaluate potential acquisitions based on updated criteria. So right now, our criteria is, uh, view shed. Habitat area, riparian areas, steep slopes, flood plain, zoning. Community preference and trail corridors, not necessarily in that order. And one of the things frankly, we have failed to do is put those eight items. Those eight, uh, acquisition criteria into a prioritized order. So that's something for the future that we should probably talk about. Now, because of the nature of our acquisitions, we're very opportunistic in terms of what actually comes available. Because of where we live, you know, we don't have large track, large tracts of land often. Um, becoming available, probably the most significant for us has been the purchase of the Black Canyon. Property a few years ago, um, and that was done mostly with the GoCo grant. Uh, which took a, a ton of work, but we don't, you know, we don't, haven't purchased a lot of great, uh, big areas, our thirty-one acres. Frankly, because they're just not available or, or available to us for any kind of reasonable price. Um, but I think we'll continue to keep our, our eye out for that. And in the meantime, we should probably have a discussion about what we want that criteria to be in order.
Quick question, Nancy.
Uh huh.
Are you documenting like this? I mean, you have, it's like, I hear you kind of talking through like these points, like how we're meeting these different goals or, you know, issues. Address. Are you documenting that?
Well, it's in, it's in your packet. My comments about each of those isn't in.
That's what I mean though. Yeah, yeah, cause I think that would be valuable to like have, you know, so.
Okay, okay. I'll, I'll do something like that. Um, yeah, you're right. It would be valuable, especially when we rewrite the master plan or update the master plan. Um, yep. So, uh, okay, six point four, and I, I, please, I can't see your hands. So if anybody has questions or comments, I'd be happy to entertain them. Six point four. And this is something that we were doing when we divided, you know, the board into two areas, one around trails and one about land, around land acquisition when Shannon was president. Um, which we kind of decided wasn't working, but I know some serious work was done. About preparing a general listing of acquisition possibilities and update annually based on changing conditions. So, um. And it, it's also interesting that that's, you know, seen as a short-term plan and it's OSAC and staff. So I think. Certainly, Tim and, and a lot of other people on the committee are always keeping their eye out for possible. Uh, purchases or acquisitions, that kind of thing. We still have never. I guess decided on any of the small purchases that are zoned open space that we would wanna pursue, other than just sending letters to those owners. Um, and that's kind of everything I know about that.
One, one thing I'd like to say about that, Nancy.
Sure.
Is that we wrote that document, um, the catalog of, uh, open space, uh, small parcels and stuff like that. Identified a lot of possible, uh, um. Small lots that we would like to go after, uh, uh, based on consolidating the Red Mountain open space. And nobody cares.
Uh huh.
Um, nobody's interested in it. Uh, you know, we've tried to get it, we've added it to, to, uh, the city in a couple of forums, including planning and. It dies a quick death at those places. So really, I, I think the, the reality is that, uh. We're, we're opportunistic in the property that we go after. And, and the reason that, that, that didn't get traction with Shannon is. That it just doesn't make sense. To go out and say, we would like this property and we would like this property and whatever, cause if those properties aren't available. Doesn't, like, we take, we, we grab things to say they become available.
Right. I think there are a couple of pieces of property in that list. You know, there's, there's two ways to look at it. There's, there's buying it to do something with it, and then there's buying it to block something with it. And I, there's a couple of pieces of property there that might go, that have developable land around them, that might go a long ways to.
Right.
Preventing that. And I'm thinking of a, a little parcel that's up on the. North side of the Intiman Trail coming down like by, oh, High Road, or I can't think of, I don't know the names of the streets up there, but there's. Um, there's a parcel up there that could be called View Shed, because it's, uh, along the side of the mountain, the south side of, um. Red Mountain in this case, but anyway, we're not gonna talk about that not tonight, but I don't think we should out of hand not consider any of that at some point.
Well, we had, the point is, we have considered that. We, we brought up quite a bit of information on it. And nobody's, uh, showing much interest in pursuing.
Right, right, right.
Okay, go ahead. Let's go ahead and get to.
Yep, having that document is valuable. Okay. And then finally, identify and pursue acquisitions or advocacy for projects of regional significance. And we, we were able to do that in, to some extent with the city of Colorado Springs regarding the Black Canyon. Uh, property that we just purchased. I mean, they were open and working with us and saying, you know, we don't want it, we want you to have it. And, and, uh, I don't know what else went, went on there, but at least, you know, we are cooperating with Colorado Springs and we're, I know, certainly willing to cooperate. When it comes to trail connectivity and, and all of that kind of thing. The Creek Walk is gonna, you know. Hook up with the Midland Trail, et cetera, et cetera. So we're working on that. And then I realized there's no reason not to talk briefly about goal seven, which is identify and pursue small technical spots. And we've already done that. So those were all mentioned. I mean, the Whale's Tail, the, the, the Black Canyon four acres, um, the Creek Walk. At Becker's, those are all small properties, but of technical significance. Um, that, that we've purchased. So I think we're, we're doing that. We can talk more about evaluating, you know. And prioritizing how we wanna do that.
I think, I, I think I wanna move us along here.
Yep, that's it. I'm done.
Cause we're coming up on, uh, yeah, seven, four, or an hour and forty minutes. So, yeah. Thank you very much, Nancy. That's great. And we'll continue careening down through this next time. Um. So, uh, on to, uh, existing trail maintenance. Um, I wanna say a couple of things about Red Mountain and Iron Mountain. And then Andrea, Andrea's gonna talk about, uh, trail inventory and probably has a lot to say about Red Mountain and Iron Mountain too. First of all, Iron, uh, Red Mountain, we've decided. We haven't completely decided, but it's a possibility that we're gonna get, uh, Remfy up on top of Red Mountain. To try to solve the problem of that, that, uh, one section right near the top that's, uh, a little dicey. Uh, as far as, uh, most people's feelings, um, they're gonna do some work up there to widen that trail. Which is really difficult to do because there's nothing to support widening it. They're actually looking at putting in a long log. To add to the width of that trail and, um, breaking out some, uh, rock that's bulging out. Um, anyway, and, and putting some steps in, um, just to make it possible to slow yourself down. When you're coming down that, that side. And we've, we also talked about, uh, uh, putting in a trail. Just up through the rocks, which I think is a great idea. The problem is that you almost have to take the one nice tree out of there to do that. Nobody seemed very willing to do that. And the reason that we're looking for that was, uh. With Red Mountain for Remfy is that we've kind of switched, uh, initially, we were going to. Um, have Remfy do. Uh, the, the washout up on Red Mountain, which is kind of a, uh. It's the, the spur trail that comes from Oak. Let's see, Oak Valley Tri, uh, Road. That's not right. It's Oak Something Road, down to the Intiman Trail. And there's a, there's a steep road essentially that goes down there. It's washed out very badly. And we're, we were gonna have Remfy do that, but it turned out with conversations that, uh, Remfy actually felt that we'd be better off. Uh, getting a mechanical contractor in there to do that. So we're, we're looking right now at, at putting out an RFP for that as quickly as possible. And we'll be looking for, uh, um, a, somebody with, uh, um. Excavation equipment to go down there and fix that. It's, it's a bit of a road job and, and that would probably be the best way to do that. Uh, so that's why we're looking at things to fill in for, with Red. probably be the best way to do that. Uh so that's why we're looking at things to fill in for, with Red Mountain. We're also looking at we've got a, a problem in that we've got Mile High Youth Corps coming in. They were gonna be working on um the replacement of the stairs on Wildcat Gulch. But we, right now, we don't have anybody to supervise them. And that would be a disaster from a lot of points of view to have them coming in without supervision. And work on that, those stairs. It's a bit of a technical problem and they really need somebody to show them what to do. So we're gonna use, we're trying to figure out how to use Remphi to do that. And then there'll be some leftover time for Remphi. And that kind of brings us, and, and Jillian, did you wanna say anything about that as far as where we're at? On, on making those stars align so that we can get Remphi on that?
Yeah, I actually have a call with Philip tomorrow from Mile High Youth Corps to see if we can align their project date with uh availability from Remphi. So I'll have an update by tomorrow afternoon.
Okay, thanks. Great. Um and then we're, we're gonna look for, for other projects and, and to fill in because we've still got twenty thousand uh dollars worth of hours um with Remphi. And I don't think just supervising the Mile High Youth Corps work is gonna do that. And so maybe we're gonna use them on Red Mountain, or maybe we're gonna do something on these other trail, on the re- other trails that uh uh Andrea has put out an inventory of. Um Andrea, you wanna say anything about that?
Uh, well, this is not an entirely updated uh list. Um I could I'm gonna edit based on just what you've been talking about this evening. Um but uh yeah, if you guys see things to be added in any of these sections, that would be awesome. Or if you happen to be hiking along and wanna nerd out and bring this with you, um just to try and keep track of things. But um I'm gonna hopefully meet with Brad relatively soon in some format. Um and we're gonna try and touch base on this list as well, so.
Okay. All right, great Nancy. Uh we can't hear you Nancy.
Um just relative to our earlier discussion, we could also use Remphi to start or do the alignment on the Bill Bauer Park.
We're not paying them for that though.
We're not paying them for that. Oh, okay.
They volunteered to do that for free.
Oh, okay, that's right. Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, never mind.
Okay, well, I just wanted to kind of bring people up to date on that. And then there's this oddball thing that uh we heard in a meeting this morning that uh Steve Bysel is all up in arms. And I, I think I figured out what that's about is that he got a lot of uh information from the bank because we finished paying off the uh, the bank loan. And that's kind of a curiosity, but uh Steve Bysel may have a right of way up there exactly where we're working on that trail. But anyway, that's a, that's another topic, probably for next month. We'll have some information on that. Um so the last thing on here, uh Mr. Remner, is your long promised uh onsite hike to Eagle Mountain or on the Eagle Mountain Trail. You feel like scheduling that?
Sure, um about May eleventh.
How about May eleventh? That sounds great to me. Uh anybody else have a a suggestion or anybody have a problem with May eleventh for doing that hike? Does everybody know where that hike is? I think most of us do, but uh.
I, I actually don't. Could you explain?
Oh, that's right. Uh of course, you're, you're brand new to this. Yeah, Jillian, if, if you go down, you know where the, where Spring Street is and, and uh um the access to our, the uh Intiman Trail off Spring Street?
Yes.
Okay, well, if you're walking up there, if you're walking up there, you're walking up uh Spring Street, you'll all of a sudden hook a hard left. When you get to the Intiman Trail, maybe a quarter of a mile up Spring Street, you hook a hard left right there. But if you kept going straight, you'd be going up this canyon. And we have a uh we have a easement on the trail that goes up that canyon. And it's a beautiful hike up there. It actually uh leads to some interesting country, nothing that we can develop. Um but it does leave, lead up to an access, uh trail access to Gog and Megog. Um someday in the, in the distant future, in a galaxy far, far away, we might be able to do something with that. But I would like to at least uh go up there, hike up there, and it's, it's a rough it's not a real rough trail, but it's overgrown a lot. I know Steve's done some work up there, but I think that would be another thing for a work day. Sometime this summer for OSAC to go up there and clear that out a little bit. Cuz it is a, it really adds a lot to the, to the hikes in uh, in Man or Two, the Man or Two Springs has to offer. So um it's the problem with the, with the uh, with the easement is it's a three-year easement uh that, that we have from the Cog Railroad. So we don't really wanna put a bunch of money into that. But I think we could certainly put some money into that if, if it would, if we get a lot out of it for clearing that as a trail. And I don't know, maybe there's some way of making that order to a bicycle trail or single-track trail. I don't know. But anyways, it's worth it. No, you're shaking your head. No, Steve.
No, it's, it's too steep for a bicycle trail, but
Okay.
I, I would like to see people using that trail because homeless people tend to go up there and set up their camps and the more people we have going back up there, we can discourage that.
Right, right. So that's great. Okay, well, let's uh yeah, let's have an OSAC uh day up there on the, on Saturday, the eleventh.
So you wanna meet at, say, Iron Springs, Gary Springs?
Yeah, the problem up there is, there's, there's almost no parking except for Iron Springs, which is what, five bucks?
Well, you can park, you can walk to get on the bus. In Memorial Park, you can take the free bus up.
Yeah, there we go.
Uh something like that, you know.
What, what time do you wanna start that, Steve?
How about nine? Meet at the Iron Springs?
Okay. Meet at Iron Springs at nine. Okay.
And I'll send out a reminder because we scheduled this a year ago or so and um I have it on my calendar, but apparently it wasn't on anybody else's calendar. And so we didn't do it. So I'll make sure that there's a reminder goes out.
Okay, so nine to eleven?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, well. Um the only thing left is the director's comments. And do we have any uh comments that you need to fill in, Jillian?
Nope, we covered everything, so.
All right, good.
Uh, nothing to report.
All right, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Okay, okay. Nancy, you wanna see? We can't hear you Nancy. Nancy, we can't hear you.
I think we usually have a, a section for future agenda items.
We do have a section for future agenda items. We never use it.
Okay, well, I'm giving you one. Um I hope soon we're gonna discuss the uh a contract or an agreement for a, a trail layout for Black Canyon.
We will do that. And one of the things that I'm gonna do is get in touch with. I don't know if we have to wait for, thanks for bringing that up. I don't know if we have to wait to actually close on the property. But we wanna get Kimley Horn in here to give a, a capabilities briefing um that they've been wanting to come in and, and give to uh Man or Two Springs. Um so we will set, I will set that up.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um.
Okay, now I've got a motion to adjourn.
Okay, well, Steve already said that. Do you wanna second it?
Second.
Okay, we are now adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Yeah, you too.